It is six o'clock and we will go ahead and start the public hearing. Sorry, that's the only time I've ever gotten that wrong. Yeah, this is regarding the budget estimates. And I believe everyone should have a copy of those. We'd open it up for questions and/or discussion.
The one question I had was in regards to legal. That says 25,000, is that for something in particular or is that just estimated cost for the year?
For legal?
Yep.
Yeah, that's Ryan's, it's a little bit more than what we pay Ryan, just in case there's anything else that has to do with it.
Okay.
That was what I wanted to clarify.
Is low going up in the county?
I have not heard that it is.
Yeah, I've not heard that it is either.
I'm sure to be determined.
It's possibly up for the discussions, yeah, right now.
The sheriff is pushing a conversation at the county level.
And he's reached out aggressively to?
Yeah, to the other communities.
Yeah, a number of us, but unfortunately not to be able to. Any other question?
One question. The, at the very bottom, it says the American Rescue Plan got 696,658. That's the totality of, is it or close to, I mean, after the, I know we spent some already, right, for the radius?
Yeah, that's what's left subtracting the 80,000.
Right, but we've only received the first tranche.
You only have that.
This is just in the appropriation, you should receive the rest of it.
Okay, so like, we can appropriate it, but before the money actually lands.
If not, I would hereby close the public hearing at 6:02. And now, if everyone would please rise, so the pledge remains standing for a period. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Dear my father, thank you so much for this beautiful day we've had and for this amazing weekend. We just thank you for the festival that was out the park. It was, it was awesome, it absolutely was awesome, it was a celebration of humanity. You tell us to love one another unconditionally and you speak brilliantly, you look into the heart, you look past the facade that we carry around ourselves and you look into the hearts and then ask us to love one another unconditionally. And that was ever so present out there at the park, it was just wonderful, we thank you for that, we thank you for the opportunity for that to have taken place, we thank you for everything that we have in this community. We know it's not perfect, we are not perfect, you know that, you tell us that we're broken, but you love us and we are called to do the same. We thank you for the opportunity to be before us and help us to make the best decisions that are in the best interest of your heart, not in our own selves, but in your heart, in which case will be the best for this community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Can I throw a call?
Brandon Almorton?
Present.
Todd Williams?
Here.
Jacob Conklin?
I am here.
Sam Heis?
Here.
Peter Prius?
Here.
All right, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda, I trust that you've had opportunity to review, do you have any questions or comments, if not, a written motion for approval?
I did have.
We've got a couple of questions.
I had one comment, I think there was a point at which I had mentioned that a citizen had talked about being unable to hear on Kiss comments from Jan. And I said Monty and that made it into the minutes, but I should have said from the public when the public expresses that. So just, I don't know if we can correct that in minutes or in any case, just let it be known that the concern was about when Jan speaks and when the public has a question that people watching us are unable to hear.
Do we talk about another, do we talk about another mic setup?
More mics.
There you go, all over.
Much more sensitive, but I'd rather mic you two up next time there.
Okay.
We have enough channels on here, so we'll have to get a little creative, but we'll be good.
Great job, Brian, awesome. Bob?
I will move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have first and second.
Oh, second.
First and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent agenda accepted as presented. Department reports, one thing I just wanted to touch on again, I offered up in prayer as thanks, the Fiesta, I was out there, oh mercy. And Saturday afternoon at the park, there were kids playing in the playground equipment, there were people disc golfing, there was walkers, there were joggers, I saw a biker, there were people using the shower houses and then you had a Fiesta going on. And then there were some nut jobs screwing up Christmas lights too. It was, it was awesome, it was absolutely awesome and we were blessed beyond measure. In fact, I had a conversation with Tasha at Fumed Boutique who was out there also with a setup and I had a conversation with her the day before and she was worried about the rain. And that morning, sure enough, it was all wet and all, and then the sky just broke and it just was gorgeous from about midday on, so it was perfect. So hats off to everybody that did that, hats off to everybody that took part in that and made it possible and just very well done, so very wonderful, it's wonderful today. Department reports, we don't have that, so Jan?
I don't have anything.
Council members, Tito?
Yes, I just wanted to go ahead and make a few comments as well on the Unicity Fiesta. I just want to, you know, let everybody know just some of the feedback I got from people. And let me just say, from all the diversity represented there was just overwhelmingly joyful and grateful and it was, you know, just absolutely amazing. And so people literally mentioned, you know, that I should convey thanks, like a lot of people asked me to please convey their thanks. We wanted to thank Mayor Chad Spence. I wanted to first, let me start with the order that I know, I know there's, there were several different initiatives, a few different initiatives, and I'll mention the ones that I know. The Soccer League had finished their championship and wanted to celebrate. There had been a group of Hispanic workers that work in sort of like chicken, egg production and they wanted to do something traditional, they wanted to have a little parade and they wanted to have some food available for all of the community. There was, then, there was a gentleman from that group, there was a gentleman and I will not mention his name, I want to thank Alberto, Felipe Alberto Pech Reyes, muchas gracias. He brought that to the attention of Vincent Hernandez, who I'd like to ask people to pray for. He's very, very sick, I believe in intensive care.
Not on a ventilator yet.
I'm sorry?
He's not on a ventilator yet.
Okay, okay, but he had, he told me that he had been intubated for a time and then he got better, so it's come and go and so we're still praying. But, so that conversation happened between we three and Vince got on the phone and called Chad. And we immediately agreed to meet with us and we met with Steve Shoemaker, we also included Jeanette Uyoa Escobar. And Jeanette had been in touch with both of those groups and so she was a key interlocutor. And after that, I wasn't completely involved in everything, but things started to come together and I'm like, well, there was one more. Because my cousin, Jim Nunez, and I had been talking about having some kind of a Tex-Mex street dance party. If you all remember, my cousin Jerry Nunez, who used to own the El Sombrero on the Ohio side and the UCEO Tool and Die on the Indiana side. In the late 60s and early 70s, he and his brother, my other cousin, Jim's father, Jim Nunez's father, they used to organize Mexican dance, like Tex-Mex dances in Winchester at the Armory, right? And so it's kind of a family tradition, we wanted that to, and that all came together. So, and then we also wanted to thank the Arts and Entertainment Committee, who I was like, wow, they immediately produced this beautiful poster and signs to put up. So just wanted to convey thanks and the joy that was expressed by all that I came into contact with during that.
Appreciate that. Tim?
I don't have anything.
Nate?
Crazy enough, I don't have anything to do with it.
You had some plans till your son left, right? Bob?
Yeah, just one thing, the area planning commission that last week and with, came up with a favorable recommendation for carts and parts on a rezoning of two lots. I think it would be on the west side of their building, from residential to commercial, R1 to C2. And then I think we'll talk about that later on because there's an alley, somewhere there's an alley back there that is a vacation that's tied into that too as well. It's on the agenda down here a little bit farther. I thought maybe Jeff would be here tonight, but?
He has a family commitment.
Other than that, good, thank you.
Brandon?
Nothing to report.
All righty, well, moving along, the city manager's spot, so that would be Monty and I'm going to give a heads up. As you guys are aware, Ryan will not be attending council meetings going forward for efficiency sake. And that doesn't mean there's not anything at all we can't address from a legal matter though. And if there's anything needs addressed, we'll get the information to him immediately and have response prepared or prepared for, you know, anything that's needed from a public's perspective. But Monty, if you want to go ahead and?
A blank grant is moving forward, his new, signed a release of funds request for that, so we'll be advertising for engineering, request for qualifications here for that, get that thing on the road.
Do we have an area we're going to start first?
I think, well, we get engineering in here, we'll probably consult with them and see where I'd like to start first. But they may have some considerations that I'm not even sure they will.
Okay.
The only thing I would offer up my end, if barring something needing to come down first from a safety perspective, I'd love to see on oak, by the backside Joe's Corner floors come down first because of new construction on the backside of that.
Yeah, perfect.
But, yeah, that's encouraging.
But then we should be, we'll start to layer metal clearance on shortly and I believe we're going to be able to use our Brownfields grant for that, so that'll save us some layers. And that's all I have.
I'm sorry, behind the Joe's Corner floors?
Where Joe's Corner floors shoes disperse.
Oh, okay, yeah, that, sorry.
I'm about to have my hands in the air. Yeah, I have a carrot wasser right now, Flot. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Present, I don't think, Mallory's not here, correct?
I just messaged her, I haven't heard back, I don't know what happened.
Okay, so old business, basically we're just looking to see if we had an update, we don't have any news yet from you and Ryan, I think memory serves correctly, cover?
Oh, on the?
The fence and?
Fence, no, we have not met yet.
Okay.
He's, he's not contacted me, I've given him a little bit of breathing room on that, but I'm going to touch base with him this week sometime just to?
No problem.
Make sure he's got me on the?
On his agenda.
On the agenda.
Cool, good deal.
Just one thing I wanted to mention on that, I know we, it was like, in my way of viewing it, there was like two different issues and one was where there is, you know, vegetation, trees or whatever, growing between two properties that are immediately adjacent, that's one issue. And the other issue was when there's trees and vegetation growing out over a sidewalk or over an alley.
Alley, great.
I took a look at the, at the ordinances and actually the ones that are about the alleys and the sidewalks is already in our ordinances. The guards of trees, bushes or hedges growing over or into a sidewalk, alley or street, this issue is covered under chapter 94, nuisances. So 9403-C2 declares the following to be a public nuisance affecting peace and safety. Quote, "All trees, hedges, billboards or other obstructions which prevent persons driving vehicles on public streets, alleys or highways from having a clear view of traffic when approaching an intersection or pedestrian crosswalk." So I think we're good on that one. 9403-C3 declares the following to be a public nuisance affecting peace and safety. Quote, "All limbs of trees, hedges or other ornamental plants which project over a public sidewalk less than eight feet above the surface of that sidewalk." So, you know, less than eight feet for people walking on the sidewalk. Or less than 10 feet above the surface of a public street. Or which would extend past a line which would reach upward from the sidewalk edge at a 90-degree angle to a point eight feet above the sidewalk. So those things are all, that was a little complicated, but that, those are all sort of already declared as public nuisances. And then there are penalties and procedures for how to deal with it and stuff like that.
Man, I think that's something that Ryan alluded to, that there's something in there that kind of speaks to it, but it's almost like that could be amended to add to property lines, could it not? It makes me wonder, I mean, that's, that's something.
With the current litigation going on in this community, with the current arguments going on in the community, I think it just needs to be clarified. And then you're going to create, just follow, and we've known this for a while, following those nuisance ordinances are going to be huge, there's going to be huge fallout.
But I mean, those ordinances already are on the books.
We understand that, there's going to be huge fallout.
From?
Can you expand on that?
Yeah.
Example, make one up.
People are going to be angry if the cities, I mean, they're angry now when we mow their yard, we just dealt with that today at the board of workers. When we start cutting their trees, when we start cutting their bushes, when we, they're going to be angry and they're going to be here to complain to you people. But the issue is they're not caring for the stuff themselves.
That's right.
When were those ordinances put into effect?
A long time ago, it's been, I mean, we have these conversations, I mean, my neighbor was upset that we cut their trees, but we couldn't see the stops on them. So I'm just telling you that when we go to start doing that, plus we have manpower issues accomplishing those tasks. So there's not enough hands to do that work and the citizens are not picking it up either.
Doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And those same issues are creating the arguments, the litigations, the police calls, the people coming into the city building complaining about their neighbors and it needs to be clarified, it needs to be refreshed. Everybody has to have an educational process and an introduction to this is how it's going to be moving forward. That's what I'm hoping that we get out of these conversations.
I don't want to speak here, you know, and possibly make a mistake, but I, in looking through, I should have maybe copied that down, but it looked like there's a way to, you know, first advise the people, you know, ask them if, you know, they could do it. You know, but there's also a way that we do it and then charge them or?
Is it a possibility to put those two ordinances along the back of the next watermill? Refresh everybody's mind? Or the link and then this and this, like title, find it here, title, find it here, be prepared?
No, I don't.
Well, I mean, I could put something on the back of the bill that asks people to be aware of those bad ordinance. But the thing that I'm wondering is why, how come the ordinance officer wouldn't just cite them if they have trees that are, I mean, not like them, like give them a notice and then once they get the notice that they don't comply, just like cutting their grass, if they don't comply, then there must be some dragon in the court or something.
That's up, yeah, something like that's on there.
And of course, if that's not been, that ordinance is pretty old, not, not that that is, you know, that just by?
I showed you guys an example of a very nice, very neatly trimmed hedge that's eight to 10 inches out over the sidewalk.
Right.
Are you going to have, you, are you going to, that's a very nice home, are you going to cut that at a right angle back to the edge of the sidewalk?
Or remove it?
That's the conversation because you're going to destroy that old growth hedge, that's the conversation. That's why it's so complicated when it's, I mean, over the last five years, our ordinance, we've had five different ordinance officers in five years. It's gotten out of hand and now we have to revisit, coach everybody up, this is what's going to be expected, this is how we're going to navigate it. There's going to be a huge learning curve.
I think the ordinance is written as clear in that there needs to be eight feet above the sidewalk for people to be able to pass. So if there's an old growth hedge, if it's only 10 inches, I mean, the sidewalk is a few feet across, so I mean, people can still get around it, I mean, personally.
No, hold on, that's gray area.
That's a gray area, I'm pushing it guys, but I'm just saying, you know, use some logic, right?
You're encroaching on ADA accessibility, which is encroaching, yeah, are you going to do that?
Well, ADA does that require?
Those are things that have to be clearly identified, how are you going to do this? And again, the only reason I'm bringing it to your guys' attention is because we've literally got people in court. This is not going to go away, it's just progressively getting worse. And it's okay until you've got a neighbor that, once it stopped.
Neighbors, neighbors change.
Correct.
So the guy that you lived by for 50 years didn't care, but the guy you live by tomorrow doesn't like.
Steve, just to be, just to, can we separate them? I mean, you're saying there are people in court and I, you know, absolutely, but it's, they're in court when, when the growth is, goes over the property lines? Or does it also?
You're talking about encroachment, it doesn't matter where it's at, you're talking about?
It matters because the?
It's encroachment in a right of way or it's encroachment on your neighbor's property, either way, it's the same.
Okay, what I'm saying is the ordinances are encroachment on right of way. Yeah. That's the existing ordinance, there isn't one for the park or the side by side.
Look at creating a fence ordinance as well.
And that may, that may or may not be, if, that's, what, what we do is express the desire of what we want to accomplish and some of this is left up to, to the attorney to help guide on what the best approach is. Whether it's a combined all-in-one ordinance or whether it's a separate ordinance altogether. And that's, that's the semantics that we were getting into, to the finished product, not the beginning of it. We're at the, at the beginning of it at this point, basically. And, and you know, first, like I say, one of the first steps is sort through what we have on the books already, whether that's adequate, whether it needs to be refined, added to, modified, changed the, make sure the enforcement mechanism is as we want it and so forth. But the, I had a citizen question me about why are we entering, why are we getting involved in the property disputes between the two parties? And I said, said, let them, let them go to court and hash that out, and I said, well, what's the court use? Well, the law, I said, exactly. We made the law, so I said, the court can't make a determination without clear and concise laws regarding this, so that's part of our responsibility. Now, if we come to the conclusion that there's, that there's, that there's a limit on what we can do, what we want to do as far as law, okay, that's our conclusion. But we don't want to just stand back and say, ah, not our problem. And it's not a matter of, I don't see it as us trying to encroach on personal freedoms, it's giving people facility to defend their personal freedoms. And help solve those disputes as opposed to muddy the waters or leave them open where it's arbitrary what the conclusion's going to be. But we're probably fairly clear on where we stand on encroachment on public ground and we're probably, we're not going to end up in civil court with people, with any likelihood on those ordinance infractions as long as they're written in a good, enforceable, fair way. But we need to review that too, because like I said, I started to say, that ordinance is relatively old, as in it probably predates, it predates Chad and I. And because the 150s predate Chad and I and that's the newest type, you know, nuisance ordinance on the book and we've just tweaked it from then, that was passed shortly, but well, were you on council then or did you come on yet? You might have been on council.
Yes.
Because you were enough before me, you might have been on council when the 150s were done, because I remember that, that was 2006 or so.
I was 2008, I think, when I came on.
No, you came on soon after that, 2007, yeah, so, because I came on in eight, but that was already done then, but that's not, the 94 is not, was long before that, so that's, we need to examine that.
So I just wanted to say that, I mean, I have had citizens say, really, they want to get involved, but, but, and you know, they don't want us encroaching, but I think you're persuading me to.
Well, I say, it's just, we want to be able to make it where the citizens can have a fair, you know, have a, for one, it'd be nice to be able to create enough of a, a clear enough path to where they don't end up in court. Where they can look at the ordinances and look at that and say, okay, this is the property and this is what the ordinance says, there's no reason to go to court because this is, you know, it's black and white enough that there's no argument anymore.
I'm thinking it's, you know, might be hard to sort of formulate, you know, the wording on how, on an ordinance like that, is there someone who can actually look at some of these cases and see, you know, maybe find things that would need to be in a proposed ordinance?
I think you're going to make a decision without looking at cases, so it's black and white, not leaning one way or another.
Well, and usually one of the things we do is lean on, on aim to, their aim, resources and so forth for ordinances in other places to pull off of and that's where?
I've got a question, in regards to our ordinance officer, has he tried to cite people this and what are people saying in response? It's not been enforced, am I doing anything about it?
They'll, to be fair, they do the minimum possible. Do they clean up the real problem, that they don't?
Well, if they did the minimum per the definition, which, Tito, thank you for looking that up, I didn't realize it was that in-depth, with so many ordinances, it's tough to know off the cuff. But take a measuring tape, eight feet, right here's the sidewalk, you're over it, sorry, you got to cut it back. I know if somebody came to me and said, your tree is nine feet, three inches from the road, you got to raise it, well, I ticked off as I would be, I mean, it's for the safety of other people's vehicles, so it's got to be raised, so it's at least 10 feet.
Okay, completely agree.
Okay.
Completely doable, but what I'm going to ask is that each of you just ride in my truck for an hour and just let me drive you around our community and show you exactly what? I want to show you why what you're saying is almost not possible.
I hate to be this guy, but how is it that not possible, measurements are measurements.
Who's, who's going to cut it back when you get to the point that the citizen isn't complying or isn't doing it?
They don't do it, we pay a contractor to do it and build it.
And when they don't pay for that contractor's bill?
Tax lien.
And when they're not paying their taxes?
Perfect, then the city takes it, we get to auction the house off. Put somebody in there that's going to take care of it and then call them off.
I mean, we just lost a property in last week's tax sale, we were going to pay the back taxes and it sold for $16,000. So it's, it's not that easy and we're still out that money. It's not that easy, it sounds like it should be that easy, but it's just really not. And the growth in some of these areas is so immense, you're going to start killing trees when you go to start cutting them back.
So you're going to hate my devil's advocate, how is what you're suggesting different than what I just suggested?
It's not, it makes sense, but what we're going to do is we're going to be constantly having more and more things on our plate to do, costing more and more money, which we can't afford to just have an open checkbook to take care of these issues.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm also trying to play the devil's advocate on the other side, is with creating a new ordinance, how is? with creating a new ordinance, how is it going to change the existing problem? We don't have enough people. It's going to cost money to do it.
I don't know that it will, but what, what creating the new ordinance is doing is it's already got you guys talking about it. So maybe through that process, we're able to coach up our community and help them understand what we need them to be doing. At least some of them. There, there's good properties that have a lot of overgrowth. That I believe we could effectively make change in having these conversations. There's a lot that we're not going to change, but a little is more than what we're, we're needing now.
Could we start the coaching process with the water bills? Can, can we get it posted on Union City's Facebook page and the website? On the. Maybe the pictures that you presented at last council meeting, can we get them posted on the website?
Yeah, people have been requesting this.
Go some. We can do like a, say, new for 2022, this is what we're laying out. And give everybody, you know, till, let's say, spring.
Well, and one thing I want to be careful.
Educated on the problem.
Yeah, and actually, Key, one thing I want to be careful is like, this is what we're laying out. In other words, I don't want to sound heady handed, you know, in our approach, because we're citizens too. And none of us really like being told what to do. Let's face it, that's how this country started. I'll tell you what you can do with your teen tax. So, um, so what I want to make sure, if, I think, if I'm hearing Steve correctly, is the fact that we want to try to impress upon how neighbors can help others, how neighbors can help neighbors in this endeavor. And that there's several out there, it sounds like, will want to do the right thing when they understand the ramifications of what they're currently doing and how it negatively affects someone else. Now, there's always going to be an exception to the rule. We've had rules and laws in the books since the stone tablets, is that right?
Yeah.
And I mean, it's been broken since then. So, I mean, that's always going to happen. We can't ever mistake the fact that we're going to have a perfect situation. But to your point, and I think to your point too, if we can make it better through communication, I think that's a good starting point. So I'll get with Will.
We are not in this situation because of what happened just today. I mean, we're going back years and years and years.
Yeah.
And we're not going to fix it overnight, but I think we need something more easily comprehended so that neighbors understand how their actions are affecting their neighbors and, and other properties. And I think we need to be able to start cleaning up some of these alleyways that are just absolutely atrocious.
And, and like I say, part of what Steve's alluding, you know, talking about on this is the, 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 the impact in, in, in terms of this is going to be enforced, it hasn't been enforced, or that we, you know, this has been allowed to happen. And what the fallout we get, the, when he mentioned the, the incident or the situation we had at Board Works today with concerning a mowing charge. Had a gentleman owns a property in Union City, he's from another town. It's, the property's vacant at this point in time, needs, needs fixed up, which is what he intends to do. But he had mowers and disrepair and ended up with COVID and various things that kept him from mowing. And he, but he, he was upset because there's a notice put on the door, but he was never called or contacted by mail or anything before it was mowed. He said, well, if I needed a contact, of course, Steve pointed out the way he had, how many weeks, four weeks or so, but.
Obviously, he's an absentee landlord.
He's an absentee landlord.
Property ever.
So, so, uh, one of the, one of the statements that he made along the lines of that was whether, well, if it's going to be like this, he didn't really want to have, you know, doesn't really want to mess with Union City in terms of owning property here. And after we got, before the end, I, I said, actually, I said, I'll make the argument that this is exactly why you want to be in Union City, because now you're going, if you take this property and you put money into it, $20,000, $30,000 into this property, whatever, I don't know what it takes, I, I don't know what to, to renovate this property, but your neighbors on either side have two feet of grass, because he said, well, where the town he lives in, I won't mention, they don't do this. They've got tall grass all over the place. And we're like, yeah, okay.
Your point is?
Bobby missed it. He would, he would have enjoyed it. So we're like, well, and I thought to point out is that this is to protect the property owners, to protect your property values and so forth. So this is exactly why you want to invest here. And this is part of what we need to convey with this, is this is, we're not trying to penalize people. We're not trying to make life hard or try to make life bad. And, uh, but we are trying to make, make things more tenable and safer for, for everybody.
Right. Yeah, well put, very well put.
And, and, you know, there's, you, you can have your independence, but at the same time, if you're, if you are putting off on, your problems off onto your neighbor, you're not a very good citizen.
You're stealing their freedoms.
You know, I was conservative as they come and that's the way I, you know, I see that.
Here's a way to get everybody talking about it. Ready? If you don't take care of your trees, we're going to add a, a surcharge to your water bill and make sure that it gets taken care of. There you go. Everybody's down. We'll talk about that by the end of the week, because that happens every time.
All right. Moving along. The cable access fees for Midwest TV and Vision Corner. The intention was after the last meeting for, to give an opportunity for discussion and for you guys to vet this out. So I would open it back up to see what, what you guys have, have come to in terms of thoughts and, and expectations or possible avenues.
The one thing that comes to mind is the cable access fees that, that are paid to the community need to be in a fund for some type of expanding our community's knowledge, uh, capability, wifi, anything.
From a multimedia perspective.
Shouldn't go into our general fund.
Right.
Other than that, I don't know, because I don't know how it works with Midwest TV, Mr. Merrill and the school. I would like to see more students involved. I like how you're here, but the whole point is, with Vision Corner, we're going to have students doing it. I'd like to see more students around town, which would be nice to have students that had Fiesta with a camera and getting some footage. I mean, I was only there for a little bit, but I didn't notice a whole lot of students there, period. So that, my, my first thing is yes, general fund, no more, just for Midwest TV on a quarter of the basis.
My question is, what is Midwest TV?
It's a good question. It's about to become Vision Corner, or, yeah, Vision Corner. We're supposed to have a meeting. In other words, the name of it, we're actually applying for a, a name change for the 501(c)(3). Because Midwest TV was actually established through previous mayor and you and, and, and Linda Wilcox, correct? And the.
And several others.
Right, right. So if you're a board that was established, and, and the, the point was basically to establish a multimedia outlet to capitalize on Kiss TV and to, to work in concert with Kiss TV, was it not? Was that not the genesis of?
The city owns the franchise.
Mm-hmm.
And the Midwest TV was formed so that the city could contract with Midwest TV to run that franchise. And, and part of that deal was that the money would quit going into the general fund and go to Midwest TV for the purposes of media communications. That, uh, so that, that's, that's where we were. The intent was to have a studio here next door until such time as something like Vision Corner came available. And we wanted to get people down here doing true paid work. That's public education government.
Right.
And that's what public TV is all about. This station was given to Union City as a pay, and we want to be sure that, that that was what it was going to be used for. So that, that's how Midwest TV came about. It came about because the high school was going to do away with Kiss.
That's right.
There was, there was no question. They, they weren't going to do anything with it anymore. And so the mayor called someone together and we talked about it and said, some of us just were not willing to let Kiss TV die. So we said, fine, the, the city can contract with Midwest TV to operate Kiss. And then they in turn can, can contract with actual people to do it. And it turned out that Kiss TV then was sort of rejuvenated.
Resurrected.
Uh, but it was definitely, it was on, it was going down the tubes. Uh, and the, uh, some of us got very plain spoken with the school board and superintendent, and they changed their mind. But that's how Midwest TV came about.
Genesis of it. Thank you.
Well, what do you need us to do here? Because it just says cable access fees for Midwest Vision Corner. It doesn't really say what kind of direction you need, so.
Yeah, well, Jan, we have a actual line item in the budget for Vision Corner now, do we not?
We have a Vision Corner Fund.
A Vision Corner Fund. Would that be suffice for the allocation of the?
Well, I will say I would prefer it not to do that. I think it needs to be for communities that only, if then we do have a studio there, because again, this building right next door was supposed to be a studio. It never happened. I don't see that happening with Vision Corner. But I think it would need to go to a fund directly for TV, whatever. And then TV, radio, whatever, media, blog, I don't really care. Then from there, that board would then decide where it goes.
You want to create another board?
No.
Okay.
The same for.
Is there an existing one? The same thing, two different things. You're getting ready to change Midwest TV's name to Vision Corner.
Correct.
The city has a line item within our budget to place gifted money for Vision Corner.
Right.
I think what Nate's wanting to know, or what he's saying is, the money needs to go to the 501.
Correct. Okay, is that what?
I.e. Vision Corner. And probably ultimately, the gifted money that Jan is managing currently will eventually go to that same fund. But I, I think you're talking, because Vision Corner is kind of evolving. I, I think you need to start calling Midwest TV Vision Corner if you're truly going to start name, changing the name. There is a separate organization.
To Nate's point, I, I disagree with you. I believe that Vision Corner is going to have a studio with people.
Oh, no, I'm not doubting that.
No, he's, yeah, he's.
I'm not doubting at all.
No, I miss no studio there.
Yeah, well, you, you pointed at the wall next door and said that there's supposed to be a studio there.
That was.
My point is, we should have had a fund created rolling forward. Eventually we would add enough money to literally make a studio there.
Well, we're, we're definitely going to have one over there. The money is there.
I, I, I guess, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of what Nate's wanting to do, looking at it.
I don't want the fund to be gifted to some artist living upstairs. There's as much as I can give.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. Well, and not just fall into the, to the, the sea of funds that, to build Vision Corner at this point and just get lost in that funding. And, and so.
Needs to go to the 501 that is currently Midwest TV.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And with the spin to that, is Mr. Merrill, is he going to be a part of what's going on with Vision Corner? And at that point, I think something in his role, shoes, whatever, does need to be compensated. Because I've just found out that he's not paid like a coach or an extracurricular person. And he's here twice a month, sometimes spending three or four hours.
That's, if, if, if I meant, yes. The Vision Corner Funds, the franchise fee funds was paying essentially, I don't want to call it a stipend, but it was part of a salary, along with a school salary, to get me to come here to do this. It was a number that was written down on a piece of paper. I didn't get a copy or anything, but what the city did, or what the school didn't pay to me, the city would make up in the franchise fees fund to make that number. And I've said, stayed true to it for three years. I got every dime accounted for. But it was over in August, so we're waiting to vote. If you do vote yes to those go to the franchise fees, my concern is, can that be retroactive back to August, or would I have to wait until the first of the year? I.e. means I'm working for free and I can't afford to do that, because this money from here, quite frankly, is what I live on. My school money is what I pay my bills on. So I've already dipped into my savings for two months to survive waiting on this. There's nothing funny going on. I prove everything. But that was just part of the, the franchise fees, Councilman, Conklin going into there to, to pay whatever equipment that we would need and part of my stipend, and it also paid Phil Williams when he worked city hours for what we did. All that is documented, not a problem. Um, turned out we didn't use as much for the, for the equipment fees, because we got the grant that Mr. Gentry and Ms. Wilcox so recently had done for us. So here we had an influx of money. We bought the equipment for that. And of course, we just are getting ready to submit a equipment order for Vision Corner. Um, and I don't know if this is involved with Mayor, if you're aware of this, but the Randolph County Foundation wanted to be involved in it somehow. So they wanted a list to see how they could participate. I just, you know, I promoted Union City for the last three years. You guys have seen me everywhere. No question, a bad thing about it, now, Mr. Conklin, I, I went ahead and last week figured out at the minimum how many broadcasts Kiss does per year away from the city, just school stuff, 52 events. And there's no stipend for it, for it. Basketball coaches get 5,000 just for a season. We do the whole year, all the home games.
I got to play, apparently I've got my devil's advocate hat on here. Unfortunately, all we can talk about here.
Yes.
Is Midwest TV doing council.
I understand that.
Also, like the filming of the rail tower.
That's part of the pay, educational.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand that. And that's where I definitely see benefit in having somebody spearhead it and do it. I think the ultimate funding would then need to go to the, it sounds like Vision Corner is going to be what it'll be called soon. Vision Corner, in my opinion, could have like three accounts. One is the gift funds that you get, two is Midwest slash TV, the funds, franchise fee. And then the franchise fee then needs to go to the board, whoever's on the Vision Corner board, to determine where those funds go. But with specific agreement from council, that it needs to go directly towards something to help our community in radio, TV.
From a peg perspective.
There you go.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Like the gifted fund councilman, that could be earmarked and in language saying, this is for this specifically.
Yep.
For that, absolutely. Well, I would, if, I would entertain a motion pending the approval of language from a, because we have to have a board meeting anyway to approve the name change, so we would draft language that speaks to the line item, that dictates those funds, what they're abused for, that has to have a council approval. That makes sense.
Can we ask question?
Yep.
Can we ask more questions before we start into motions? One step back, the, so just ask it, because I don't know, okay? Citizens can ask the city government for detailed documents, including financial things, to find out, you know, what's going on. That's sort of the, the law in Indiana.
Yeah.
Um, my question is, um, is that, can citizens request that type of information from a 501(c)(3) like the future of Vision Corner? That's my question, because I mean, we can do it from city government, but we've not, we've, I mean, we've already formed a nonprofit. Is, can citizens have access to information on how that nonprofit is managed? Is that as public as city government?
I'm 90% sure that's a no. Because, I mean, it is a nonprofit, but it is not a public entity, like.
It's a separate.
It's a separate business nonprofit.
Yeah.
Just because my concern is, I mean, this is a public thing. I mean, in the, in, in the fact, I mean, it comes from the city government as an entity. And the board members are of, elected some of them officials or, or, could be wrong. Right, or, 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 and they, they get some money and then they start managing.
Five, five, there's elected officials on the board, but they're not elected officials to the board.
Yeah. Right, come on. Right, exactly, exactly. So.
Tio, I think your question is summed up in, basically, the city is just making a grant to that 501. Just like they do periodically, they did all through 2020 to arts, music and entertainment, because we weren't able to go out and raise money because businesses and industry was shut down. So theoretically, what the city's doing is granting that money to be pushed to Midwest TV slash Vision Corner for the use in managing Brian Merrill and the activities of Kiss Town.
Can I ask if this, this board who we would potentially.
Can I ask if this, this board who we would potentially be distributing money to, to pay, you know, Mr. Merrill's, a portion of his salary, it sounds like, a stipend or whatever you want to call it? And, and I hate the fact that you're having to, to sit here and advocate for your pay, what was agreed to, you know, whether that was a handshake agreement or, and contract. But i- is this something that we can put down in writing so that this doesn't come up again? This isn't something that's?
I mean, the funds come to the city. You have the right to dictate however they are dispersed. I mean, in other words, the grant can be conditional. In other words, we will give this money to you based on these premises. You have the right to do that.
Question.
Well, I'm saying just us, but the, the board who would be then distributing the money to, to Mr. Merrill or whoever is in his position in the future. So that this discussion doesn't happen again, that this misunderstanding, this, this ficket doesn't get turned off and, you know, he's sitting in a position where, you know, a large portion of his salary is not coming in the door. And, and, you know, he's putting it, put himself, he, he's in a position that is very difficult. And I understand that.
I think we have to be very cautious on putting the verbiage of how much money we say would go potentially because that changes. It would need to be a percentage or in.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying we need to structure it in writing so that it's there. What, however that language states, you know, whatever is, is, is a dollar figure or a percentage or, or what? But, but something needs to be, I think, contractually there so that this doesn't happen again. And, you know, like I said, I, I hate the fact that you're here having to advocate for, you know, whatever, you know, was agreed upon previously. And, you know, I, you know, there's several of us who have, who have, you know, spouses or, or family members who are teachers and, you know, the, the cornerstone of our community. We need to ensure that, you know, they're taken care of. And I, I would, I would say that that's, this is a situation where we need to do that.
Who appoints people on the board for Vision Corner slash Midwest TV?
I, I brought on members, I suggested, I, I started to put on board in the beginning and the few members I wanted to bring on was denied. So when members of the board retired, resigned, I brought those members back on that I wanted back on. That's just something I said, here's somebody I think is good for the board. And then it goes up for the board for vote. Joe went through that, Joel went through that. But I thought the strategic councilman, Conklin, to have somebody from the radio, somebody from the newspaper, somebody from all media, because their brain power, you know, work together. That's, that was always my concept. And I, I wasn't able to do that until.
On there, Bill?
No. I think he asked and I had other implications.
You are, okay. What do you know about Maggie?
Go back to Tito's question about transparency. One of the things that you do get in, in a lot of, in, in many not-for-profits, not necessarily all, but because there's lots of different types or different missions. But any not-for-profit that has a mission like this likely is going, will advertise or at least make available that, the voluntarily, the financial information because of more of a, more for promotional purpose than anything. It's just, you know, a different kind of organization, but you look at the material the Community Foundation of Randolph County puts out. And they're very open and forward, want, you know, shouting from the rooftops, this is where all the money went. Because you want people to know that. And so, so it's, and, and, you know, for example, Mr. Merrill's school salary is public information as being part of government and so forth. Everybody, everybody can look, everybody can look up and see what their favorite teenager makes. That's, that's all public information.
I think what you guys are going to have to do is you're going to have to vote to give those funds to the not-for-profit. And I think since they're going to have a meeting, I mean, that's the president of board right there, they're going to have a meeting. I think they, as in their board, needs to present back to council then, at the next council meeting, what that percentage is going to be and how that budget is going to be created for those, the use of those funds. I think that's the, I think, because you guys are literally planning on giving up those funds. So it's going to be hard for the council to identify what that is. But I think it's respectable to communicate back and forth and you guys know what the deal is.
A board is made of, of people that we trust in our community, multiple people that are sitting up here. If we're gifting, granting those funds to Midwest TV slash Vision Corner, we got to have faith in that board that they're going to use the right amount for it.
Right, I, I think we should be transparent and produce that for council.
If I might interject here, what must a nonprofit disclose to the public? Tax exempt nonprofits are required upon request to provide copies of the three most recently filed annual information returns, IRS Form 990, and the organization's application for tax exemption, which includes correspondence from the organization, the IRS related to the application, to demonstrate a commitment to transparency and to make it easier for those seeking financial break information to view these documents. Many charitable nonprofits post these documents from a link on their website, which we could certainly post those, those wouldn't be a problem.
I was way wrong, my apologies.
No, no, good. I, I had written down that gap for a while.
Tito's question, the Community Foundation makes grants. They'll, they'll make a grant to Midwest TV, but at the end, and it's for a year. At the end of that year, Midwest TV or any grantee is required to submit a document saying, what, we, we, we ask you for the money to build a fish pond. At the end of that year, they better have done that. And that, those are public documents that you can, you can get that sort of information.
Perfect.
So to answer your question, yeah, okay, it's not under the Indiana Sunshine Law, but it's under federal law that we created 501(c)(3).
Okay, perfect. So I, I think, I, maybe I move? Tell me if I need to move. That we require a budget plan, right? For the use of funds. If we're going to grant funds, I don't know how they're going to be used, who's getting them, that kind of thing. Now, that's.
We draw up the budget plan.
Yeah, I was saying the $15,000, the earmark for the franchise fees to go up, that covers the difference of what I was getting paid. So that 15 has been going to me, period.
No, I'm good with paying you.
Nothing else, nothing else.
I like the transparency. I have no problem with any of that.
There's one budget line.
That 501(c)(3) each year, you need to say, we're giving you $23,000, the city's giving you $23,000. Where are you spending it? 15 grand is going to go to Mr. Merrill or that position.
Equipment, thousands.
I don't care.
And since, and since this has ever been done, everything that's ever been purchased and that money is for the last three years is in a huge ass folder, but it's accounted for.
Good, good. That's what I want, that's what I want to see.
I would like to ask before we form a motion that, you know, consideration be given when you guys do discuss that to backdate it so that his salary is seamless through August. So as you had mentioned, right? So please consider that.
From the community, and I don't know how feasible this is, for the council meetings to be at, excuse me. The council meetings need to be viewable every meeting, whether it's on Facebook livestream or Kiss TV. Is that a possibility to make sure that happens?
Tonight, round the volleyball game. So that's, the sports always take precedent. We are working towards being able to do two things at once.
Question, why do sports take precedent over this? Is there a reason or?
Because it's America.
No. No, I don't know who made that decision.
I think one of the other could be recorded.
It's been, I mean, when we had a sporting event, that always goes live first and then, I mean, like tonight, then we will rebroadcast.
I, I can, I can answer that question with no involvement whatsoever. Kiss is a school program and school activity comes first.
Well, technically it's a peg.
But this, but, and that, but see, this is also part of what we're, part of what the expansion, the part of what Midwest TV was all about was, is it's more than just what the school wants to do with it and the, the community's involved in it, the city's involved in it. Everybody's, you know, there's.
We're looking to connect with an NBI interface, which means that you can click on and watch a council meeting or you can watch a volleyball game.
Creating resources that the school does get on its own and create.
Because a council meeting is more important than a volleyball.
Well, I can, I can argue both ways.
Do we, would somebody care to form this in a, in front of a motion based on the considerations that have been given from Councilman Delmore and Councilman Freese? Would you mind?
Let me do a little math here.
I'm not sure how to form it, honestly.
I move that the funds that the city gets for cable access will be given directly to or granted to Vision Corner slash Midwest TV. They will be held in a separate fund under that group. And those funds will be used for TV, video, blog, some type of furthering in knowledge for individuals, students or older. And that a certain percentage be paid to the person who's in charge of that. I'm trying to do the math on that. Uh, would that be roughly 65% go towards that?
I have no idea.
Here's, here's the tough thing.
The, the 15 was, was what was earmarked. So that goes up and down depending on the trip.
Exactly. And that's where, if it ever gets below 15, do you, what do you want that group to do?
That's what has to be discussed. I don't think, I don't think it'll get below 15.
Have we ever been below 15 last 10 years? No, we've not even been below 15 last 10 years. Grain and subterrations, yeah, they do fluctuate, but it's never been an issue, at least in the last 10 years. That's, again, that's not to say it won't ever happen, but.
All right. To finish my motion, we'll just say, move it on to the board that meets next week or the week after, and then that information will be proposed back to council the next meeting.
As a little budget?
At the form of a budget.
Thank you. Perfect. Retroactive dog is for.
There we go.
I'm glad you did that because that was about the longest motion in a century.
Yeah, we have a major first movement section. What's the easy part?
Jan, if you would, roll call vote.
Brandon Elmore.
Yes.
Bob Layley.
Stane.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Freese.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, councilman.
And our, our allocations, unfortunately, I don't have the insight because I was hoping, part, one of the presenters here tonight is part of the plan for the proposal for the remaining art funds. And we are not to that point yet to share that detail, so I don't have anything new to present for art funds. They're still sitting where they were sitting when they were deposited, so.
Basically, on the art funds, if like, if you receive the proposal for the remainder during this week, for example, can we get them right away? Is there time to study them?
Absolutely. Yeah, same thing I'm trying to do with the Vision Corner and the, yeah, absolutely.
I've got a new slash old business thing that we need to address. I emailed about it earlier, but the rest of council wasn't on it, so.
Yes.
If you're ready for me.
It's new business, so we'll, we'll start that off as new business.
Okay. Basically, it's about the Plum Street addition that we've all basically approved. We've heard the engineering work and everything's moving along there. We have another place where we have to make a decision. And I don't know if it's official yet, but I want to get a consensus so we can start getting some, some work done. We're working on the residential TIF. There have been four done in the state of Indiana. We're in conversations with the gentleman that have done two of the four. So I would say he's an expert. Not everybody would say he was an expert, but he, he's the one that knows the most in the, in the state. That individual is ready to start working on our behalf. He is going to cost between $10,000 and $12,000, full disclosure, of course. And those funds would need to be paid for, to do all of the TIF paperwork and organizing to get a, get that taken care of on the Plum Street addition. As a reminder of what a TIF is, the definition of a TIF is all those tax funds will then be collected. There's still a lot of things that have to happen, hearing, public notices, letters, all kinds of things. But if this, if the consensus of this council is we can move forward, just make sure it's over $10,000, we want to make sure we're being fully transparent. Gentleman's name is Russell. Russell will work on the city's behalf to get the TIF paid to work. It is a long process, can take 90 to 120 days, sometimes longer. But it's, it's imperative that we get this moving along one way or another, or we stop talking about it and we just vote it down and stop talking about it. I feel like we're all on the same page from our initial meeting of getting housing in Union City, and this is how we can do it, so.
Yeah, TIF stands for tax increment financing, by the way. And the idea is that is necessary for the infrastructure, which is our responsibility in terms of the streets and water lines and so forth. Russell Brown is of Clark, Quinn, Moses, Scott, and I think it's Gronn, LLP, out of Indianapolis. They're on Meridian Street downtown Indianapolis. And, and to Nate's point, they have done two of the four, and they have done Rushvilles. This is why we were turned on to them because Rushville is one of the leading small communities in the state of Indiana now, and they're stellar, I think they're stellar recently. Yes, yeah. And, and so we, they, and we've worked, we've actually, we've hosted them, they've hosted us. So in fact, they have had an invite to us. Mike, were we, Bill. Bill's really, oh, there you go. Were we, did you go down, were we together, we went to, or we went to Sullivan, didn't we? Or did we go to Rushville together?
We all went to Rushville. I went to both.
I went to both, okay. So you, we toured, you've toured Rushville as well, yeah. And, and it's, it's an outstanding young, or not young community, it's probably about sort of Zars, but it's, it's got a lot of growth. And they went through this entity, Russell's entity through, for their housing district, housing expansion. And they come with high acclaim. They come with high praise from Rushville. That meant a lot to us because we are so, also a small town, about the same size town, I think. And so, because I love going with a known commodity. I don't love going with someone that nobody knows anything about. And to Nate's point, they've done two of the four that exist in the state. So we, yes.
The unique thing about him doing Rushvilles, the, the one he did was a completely private housing TIF. Rushville was a public-private housing TIF where the community put up the, the money and did the infrastructure, just like what we're proposing. So that's why it was important for us to, to follow their footsteps because they've already hit all the landlines.
And theirs is so far as their streets and roadways, I think, were getting put in. All the underground work was already done, the lots were squared away. All that was done. They were breaking ground when we were there. There was two houses being broken ground. And Steve and I were there in June. So I'd be curious to drive through there again. I bet they have eight to 10 homes that they're building foundation and ready to go, so. Basically, what we're looking for is a consensus for council. Are we good to green light Russell Brown on our behalf to keep working on this?
Do you have a question?
Well, I'm good to, to green light Russell Brown for, I mean, for, for the TIF thing. I mean, who, who it is, it's sort of, I mean, you'll, you'll know the, the, the actors involved. But are we also doing, or are we also doing the TIF for the Oak Street? And if not, and if not, why don't we throw them in?
I wish it was that simple.
Because it's not contiguous.
They have to be contiguous properties.
Not contiguous. Will we be the only city with two tips?
No, we have a commercial TIF, and that's being revamped. And that has been a process that started early this year, and it's still not gone through. So that's where the 90 and 120 days is very flexible.
Good question. It would have been nice to have those there. But I would, if there are no other questions or comments, I would enter, I mean, just like for a consensus.
I mean, there's no official thing to vote on, but we all want to make sure as we keep moving forward, we're all on the same page.
We're going to have to approve the bill.
Yeah, we'll have to approve the bill, too.
Yeah, I'm in.
Let's do it.
Okay. All right. Fire three, four. Okay. All right. Then the next item on the agenda for the new business is 2112, ordinance number 202112. Ordinance to amend zoning map, which is the carts and parks on the first screen. If you would, I don't know, Monty, if you wanted to speak, or Steve, if you had anything you wanted to add, are you ready to address this?
I mean, carts and parks has basically expanded their, their storage area with gravel and chain link fence. And due to some conversation, they were requested to change the zone from R1 to C2. And they've successfully navigated that through the county, I believe. And I think it's up to the council to put it to bed, so.
Please stand, state your name.
My name is Charles Hopper. I live at 319 Fairfax Avenue. I have the property directly behind carts and parks. I'm here to speak out adamantly about changing this zoning. Mr. Thompson, when he owned it, he took very good care of his property. It was always clean. He was from the city. He was one of us. These people don't live here. And since they bought it, it looks pretty rough over there. And I don't want no big pole barn going up behind me and just more trash. That's my little piece of heaven right there, guys. That's all I got in this world. I don't want to see my property values drop because carts and parks thinks they need more money. I don't see my property values drop, because carts and parks thinks they need more money. Eugene went outside of town and bought a property and built a warehouse. Longmore's auction house is for sale. They can buy it, and that's plenty of storage for them. They don't need to come in and, and ruin all of our property values with their pole barns and their gravel, which they've already got down, cleared up to my fence, and all their chain link fence. I mean, I, I'm sure you want to see the, the city grow, which I do, too, but not at three or four people's expense. Thank you.
Appreciate that. What was your address again?
Three nineteen Fairfax.
Okay.
Just please stand, state your name, address.
My name is Trey Burnham. I live at three twenty-two Lennox Avenue. I'm also here to oppose the, the changing of the, of the zoning, yes, thank you. You guys talked about ordinances earlier, and I believe the rubbish slash junk is one of our ordinances. And what appears to me, I live right to the east, I was thinking back to the west direction of carts and parks. It appears to me like there's a lot of times there's broken down, appears to be, I don't know, I don't work down there, broken down carts down there, okay? Don't have bodies, don't have seats, whatever, and I know the bodies are interchangeable and all that, just like Hopper said, it looks, looks trashy. Broken skins down there sometimes, empty skins just stacked up. You got a sign down there, some big flashing sign that doesn't flash, it just sits there and does nothing. And we got all this kind of rubbish back there. Okay, now, Mr. Hess said something about protecting property value, right? So if that comes closer to my house, I won't see that make my property value down. So I don't really see how that's fair to me or Hopper. Or Lady lives across the street, which fortunately she's not here, I can't speak for her, but she got stuck in Texas, she was going to be here, but we don't, I think you should take everybody's opinions that it's going to affect and take that into accountability, just on one guy, like Hopper said, don't even live here, and I've been here forty-three years. I've, I've donated my time to this city, okay? So, I mean, I, I know some things, but I don't know.
This is just a vacant lot.
Make small things short. He's gonna get his way. Also, down here, I know that the workers park on the side of the road, which is fine, I know they have a place to park, but then the semis come in, okay, they park right behind carts and parks, so you can't get in down the road down here. I'm pretty sure that he's been told that since that's still residential, he's not allowed to park anything on that gravel right now. Okay, like I'm working day, there's fifteen, twenty golf carts sitting on here, so he's not even paying attention to what any of you guys are telling him, so, thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you both.
I'm Joel Bransing. I live at three twenty-one Fairfax Avenue. My property is north. I, I just would like more information about what they're proposing on that property that's south of me. Can you explain a little bit more about what they want to do with it?
The, the only thing that they have informed us of, the only intention that they have is exactly what they've completed. That's it. They, they have, they do have bigger plans, but it doesn't even involve that corner.
What's gonna happen with the house?
I have no idea.
Eugene owns it.
But they already done what they wanted to do. Eugene, excuse me, Eugene don't own it. You're talking about the house to the north?
To your east, my south.
Yeah, the one where Sean and Nancy used to live. Eugene don't own that house. They bought that house as well. Supposedly, there's two lots that went with that, the one that he's grabbing, and then the house lot. That's the impression I was under. And somebody said earlier, may have been Mr. Ley, I'm sorry, said that both, both, both lots, they were trying to get zoning to commercial.
Right.
Okay. I do not want a pole barn beside my house, I'm telling you. So if they tear the house down or whatever, because if you're gonna make that commercial, then they could probably do whatever they want with it, correct?
Well, that's what I want to find out, is what, what can they do now, what could be done in the future if they decide to sell that property against, to my, south of me? That, I mean, that's my biggest concern is, again, first of all, what are they gonna do with it? Second of all, what could they do with it in the future, and what could someone who buys that property, that business in the future, also do with that land?
The unifying zoning board, it has a list of all the uses for residential and all the uses that are, that are allowed through commercials, so I think you can follow that along and look it up and see, but there's quite an extensive list of possible uses for wanted commercials.
Like, you have to find out more specifically what they plan to do in the immediate future. I have no idea.
Yeah.
Charles Hopper again. I have talked to Mr. Thompson about that a lot, that's between carts and parks and the, and the White House there, and Eugene does own the White House beside me between carts and parks and myself. He did buy, when he bought that old grocery store, there was a lot there, something between the house and the grocery store, and he went to the people that lived in the White House and gave them an opportunity to buy half of that lot, so his business wasn't backed right up against their property, which they did, which now what carts and parks is trying to, I guess, get you guys to change the zoning on, is, well, they own all of it now, but at one time they owned half of it, and people in the White House before carts and parks bought it, owned the other half. So that's, that's where the gravel is now, on, on basically that, that one lot there, from the way I understand it.
I appreciate that. Honestly, I would like to table this, because I would like that discussion. This is a delicate situation for me, as you can imagine, because I, you know, we, we want, someone aptly stated they want business to grow, obviously, we, we should all want that, but at the same time, it shouldn't be at the expense of our citizens. There's gotta be a, a friendly merger there. Something kind of me that I'd like to talk about, you know, and, and see if, if we can explore this a little bit deeper. And, and bare minimum, we need to address some of the concerns that have been stated.
Well, what, and that's fine. I mean, he's very successful, so, again, the only conversation that I've had with them is exactly what they've done, is all their intention is, they do have plans for expansion, it does not even include the lot that they're currently sitting on. The city has had multiple conversations with them about their expansion. It will be a lot larger than where they're at now, but it's not going to be in the same location. So they can be tabled, we can have a, a conversation with Jeff and his family and...
Yeah, maybe he could come up, maybe he can come up to the next meeting if you guys want to come back.
Yeah, great. We changed the zoning, so they can do a little deal there, and they're going to expand...
The reason that the zoning had to be changed was because of a complaint that was received at the county's office. So the county requested that that zoning be changed for that lot to enable him to do what he needed to do. And, again, the reason that he wants to do that is to help clean up the mess and better secure the assets that he's trying to sell. That, that's the purpose for him doing that.
Sure, and we, and we changed the zoning to commercial, so he can park his golf carts there, and he just, he decided to sell that place and expand somewhere else. And if fertilizer factor moves in, or marijuana dispensary, won't that be fun?
Sir, I, I'm, I'm not here to argue with you, but that's part of living at the edge of a commercial area. I mean, that could happen at the auction house, right across the street from you.
Well, it's a farther distance from, from my front door than my back door with carts and parks.
Well, yeah, our, again, we'll table this for now, and I, I want to have a discussion with them, and he also give them, give him an opportunity to, to go, because I think he was supposed to be here, and now he's gonna try to be here.
I reached out, I reached out to him to sit.
He was taking the...
He, he basically said that he's been out late dealing with rental golf carts and everything with the James Dean and all the things that he supplies carts for. I, I think he needed a day off.
Yeah, no, I don't blame him. I'm sure, yeah, especially James Dean days, I know that was his day. So out of fairness to him and respect for him, because I know he's a, he's a wonderful gentleman, if you get a chance to talk to him, and, and I know he would not want to be on the wrong foot with his neighbors either, so I think, I think there's some, some other avenues we can explore here and, and see if we can't...
Help me understand here. The fence is already up, and there's gravel already poured?
Yes, there's carts already parked in there.
Yeah. It, basically, what his plans are for the property, there's nothing that says you can't put gravel over top of your grass. There's nothing that says you can't put a fence up. And that's literally the only plans we can discuss with me. It's, it's basically just a part of the... To my knowledge, no. That's probably a year, year and a half.
Sort of this...
Asked if there was gonna be a pole barn on the coast of the building over there, because of the safety.
I agree to, I'll make that a motion, but you can think, think back of what we did on Oak Street at Lawrence Appliances as an example, a little bit to talk about in the meantime. If you think back to that, some of the conditions we put on that, it's just an avenue, but, but I, I, at the same time, I'm, I'm also one that, while I'm pro-business, I also don't like to creep into residential areas, it happens, that sometimes is detrimental to people, and hurts, and can hurt the values. I'm, quite frankly, concerned about creep in my own neighborhood that, that could potentially happen. And I have the capability of, of being one of the people to creep in if I wanted to, but I'm not in a position to at this point, but, but I could impose on, on neighbors if I, if I was still inclined.
Can I ask these guys a question?
Sure.
What would you guys like to see happen or not happen? It sounds like he's already done what he's going to do.
He's, I mean, he's already put the gravel down, I mean, like, we can't stop that. It's like I said, I did it to Joel, I put a gravel driveway beside my house, between his house and mine. I didn't ask him, I just put it in.
So what's the best case scenario now?
Best case scenario is stay residential.
Right, I don't want the, what, the junk that's in the previous fence to come closer to my house.
This is all stuff that's communication that we need, we don't have both parties here to communicate that, so that's...
I'm gonna drive by when I leave, that's why I was curious.
So, number, the, the next one, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, which is the, I'm sorry.
Did we move the table?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we didn't finish it. Tim did move, we need, we have a second.
Hold on a second.
Who was that?
Bob. All those in favor, signify, like, to table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposing it? Okay, table for the next meeting.
Just a question, what is the next meeting?
It would be first, second Monday in October.
October eleventh.
Yeah, six p.m. Sorry, gentlemen, I just, I hate to have to get, I should come back in, but I want to make sure we do watch right. I want to try to shortchange anybody who's listening. Then ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, which is the budget estimate, this is on the first reading.
And that was the public hearing?
That was the public hearing.
This morning.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain, entertain a motion for approval on the first reading.
I'll move with, except ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, budget estimates on the first reading by title one.
Yeah, first, we have a second.
Hold on a second.
Jan, if you would.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Brandon Almore.
Yes.
Bob Ley.
Yes.
Nathan Conklin.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Fries.
Yes.
All right, any visitors wishing to address the board, please stand, excuse me, state your name and nature of business and address.
Lauren Welch. What was I supposed to say?
Oh, you're good. Just your address.
Oh, two two six North Plum Street.
Thank you.
Anyways, I was wondering, Backstage Labs, what the status is of that situation?
If I might, Mayor, I sent to Crestline's, the gentleman that's overseeing the project for John Anderson, and told him that the city would not approve the vacation of the alley until we had a documentation that they were going to repair the property down there and put it back the way that it was.
Okay.
And I haven't heard a thing back from him either, but...
Thank you.
But they were on notice.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's why we didn't vacate the alley, for that specific reason. Apologize, it's not the news you want to hear necessarily, but at the same time, yeah, it's not, we're not vacating until they, yeah, they fix what they've broken.
I appreciate it.
No, thank you, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, before we wrap up, can you hit some of those key points that you emailed us, council members, about the Backstage building?
Oh.
At the last meeting, we said we'd potentially discuss it, and...
Yes. Let me go to my set file.
Sorry, I know I'm dragging the meeting out, but we get questions, I'd like to get them answered.
No, absolutely.
I know, sorry, Monty.
Yeah, it'll be fine. Good Lord, I sent a lot of emails. Do you guys have any, do you guys have a chance of copying that?
I can find it, it'll take a second.
I know what they were.
Yeah, I said, going off my memory is a bad thing. Oh, okay, I think I found it. Yeah, I found it. Regarding the Backstage, an update, they are still in the pre-leasing, and this is from the Backstage Location Manager, which is a very fine individual, name's Madison, and she, they are still in the pre-leasing process. They've accepted twenty, between twenty and twenty-five applications. Most of the applications have been young, single adults, including single moms, and those working part-time and/or attending school, or she, she said, actually, and attending school, as well as social security age. Applicants must, no exceptions, must have proof of income. Income must be at least twice the rent amount. They are not offering vouchers. It has never, and it never was in all caps, been echoed by any member of Crestline to come live for free, quote unquote. That is neither accurate nor even feasible. Rent ranges anywhere from two to three hundred per month to seven to eight hundred dollars per month, depending on what their income is. Inspections will be performed, and at a bare minimum of yearly. Rent is due on the first of the month. Late fees are assessed on the fifth of the month, the same month. If rent is not received, evictions are issued on the fifteenth of the same month, if not received, if rent is not received. They're not messing around. She stated that the, that her superior and she will be seeking to attend a council meeting soon, so that we can all have faces to the names. They're more than happy to address any questions and address any concerns. Communication, obviously, is critical, and she couldn't stress enough that it behooves them for this project to run well and run smoothly, especially for the investor's sake who has dumped a lot of his own money into the project, because this is a public-private partnership, so it, it is a thirteen million dollar project. They are in the process of also, and this part, and they are trying to see if they can get the bump, the maximum amount of the median income to be eighty percent, as opposed to the current sixty percent. So that would allow more people with a broader income range to be able to live there. They are trying, they are in process, they haven't heard back yet, whether that's gonna fly or not. Just keep, just know that you have to stay within a certain range overall as a project, so in other words, if they open up more slots for eighty percent income of the median, that means they have to add, drop a sixty down to a forty, or a forty down to a twenty, if that makes sense. Because you've got to come within, it's still got to land in that forty to sixty percent average, if you will. It's got to be, yeah, that average has got to stay the same. So it is a bit of robbing Peter to pay Paul, but we don't know if that's gonna go through yet or not, at least the attempts have been made.
Any ETA on when they're opening?
She's, she would look for it to be sometime late October, November, is what she would expect. She said the, the, the previous head was like, yeah, we probably shoot for September, but she, that's not happening. She goes, I didn't hear, that's not happening.
I was thinking December.
But hopefully that addresses, again, addresses some of the concerns that were stated, and, and again, I can't stress enough from the human element, going back to the, we'll just And, and again, I can't stress enough from the human element, going back to the, we'll just put a bow on this one. Going back to what we experienced over the weekend, there's a lot of sad misperceptions about people out there based on what they do, where they're from, what their name is, what color their skin is, what their gender is, you name it. And sad, because that's, nobody knows. Mr. Hopper, it's pretty cool, because I don't know that I've ever met you. And I'd be an ass to assume anything about your life, because I've never walked in those pretty nice looking shoes you got on.
Walmart specials.
Right, there you go. I don't know what you've been through. I'd be stupid to make any assumptions about you and where you've been, what you've done, what your thoughts are, because that's not fair. And we're all in that boat. And so we should all want this project to go swimmingly, and we should be encouragers of it and encouragers of the people that live there. Because I think we've all had parts of our own lives where we've had to find ourselves trying a little bit harder and maybe try to do a little bit better. We've all been there. And so we should always want the same for our neighbors and ourselves, so... But thank you for bringing that up, May. And with that, I would hereby entertain, well, no, announcements via the next city council meeting, as stated earlier, Monday, October eleventh, that's at six P.M. Where it works is Monday also, October eleventh, at one P.M. I would hereby entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor, sign for a, say a aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Do we know how many people are actually gonna be able to get use of this place from all people here in the city?
Oh, in terms of the community?